Day, January twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, this meeting is being held in person and can be viewed on local cable channel thirteen oh three. Or on the internet by accessing Town Hall Streams and selecting Bucksport. Questions or comments may be submitted prior to or during the meeting by emailing slasire@buxportmaine.gov. Or during the meeting by calling four six nine seven three six eight. Second item on our agenda tonight is the swearing in of our councilors-elect, Ed Rankin and Steve Bishop. Right hand. We'll start with Steve, say your name first, and then maybe.
Right hand.
Yep, use your right hand.
Hi, Steve Bishop.
Hi, Edward Rankin.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws.
And will obey the laws.
And will obey the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Maine.
And of the state of Maine.
That I will, in all respects.
That I will, in all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the charter and ordinances.
Of the charter and ordinances.
Of the town of Bucksport.
Of the town of Bucksport.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of town councillor.
Of town councillor.
Congratulations.
No alias.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Third item on our agenda is roll call, councillor Eastman.
Here.
Councillor Morrison.
Here.
Councillor Bissonnet.
Here.
Councillor Stewart.
Here.
Councillor Ormsky.
Here.
Councillor Bishop.
Here.
Councillor Rankin.
Here.
Uh, fourth item is the annual actions of the council, uh, first being the election of mayor, votes in the floor for nominations.
Move Peter Stewart for mayor.
Second.
Peter Stewart nominated as mayor, are there any other nominations? Hearing no others, been moved and seconded, all those in favor? All those opposed? All those abstained? Motion passes. Congratulations, sir.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, next is election of a deputy mayor, uh, open the floor for nominations.
Nominee Paul Bissonnet?
Second.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll close. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained?
Are you opposed?
I abstain. I'm only opposed on the days of mayor, isn't it?
Alright, thank you. Um, committee assignment discussion, um, like we've done in the past, um. If there are committees that you serve on presently that you'd like to continue on, or if you have another choice, um. If sometime in the next week you could email me, text me, call me, um, let me know what you'd like to serve on, um. We usually end up serving on two, um, but if you have the pleasure of only wanting to serve on one, we can certainly work around that, so. Um, just let me know in the next week or so and we'll let the, um, Jacob and Sue know and we can get those posted, so. Thank you. Um, presentation of town council recognitions, we don't have any. Minutes of previous meetings, town council minutes from twelve fifteen twenty twenty-two. Any questions? How would the council like to proceed?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? You in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Yep. Uh, item seven is receive and review correspondence, Orland Police Call twelve twenty twenty twenty-two. Orland Police Call twelve eighteen twenty twenty-two. Uh, Verona Police Call twelve nine twenty twenty-two. Uh, Verona Police Call from twelve twenty-one twenty twenty-two. We have a thank you letter from twelve twenty twenty twenty-two. Uh, another Verona Police Call on one three twenty twenty-three. And Orland Police Call on one three twenty twenty-three and a thank you email on twelve eighteen twenty twenty-two, any questions? Chief, seems we were busy out there for a while, huh? Helping other folks?
Right, sir.
Everything work out alright from what it looked like?
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, next we have, uh.
Did we miss in here this place to? I'm confused, where, where did we talk about the committee assignment, is that in discussion, right?
Committee assignments, you just did.
No, where, where the, the committees that were just met though prior to this.
Oh, I.
Okay, that would be down under discussion items, just not, even if that's where you were doing it.
Right, right, right. I haven't done this in a while, so.
We've been a month off.
Uh, we have some ordinances to consider introduce, the first reading is a proposal to the change the zoning of map thirty-two lot one seventeen, one eighteen. One twenty-one, one twenty-two, and one twenty-six from the village to the downtown district. Um, any questions on that? That is sort of highlighted where the yellow is on the screen is the, I guess, the north end of the, the district that would basically shoot across to the. Northwest from there to basically coming across from Central Street, crossing at the end of Bagley Lane and over to the Elm Street. Intersection, so. If there's no questions, we will have a second reading and a public hearing at our next meeting to finalize that. Uh, next is a first reading, change to the fee schedule, um, we will not discuss the animal shelter surrender fee. Um, we'll take that up as a regulatory review item later on, but we also have a commercial solar permit fee. Um, that is one fee, where, where did Luke go off to, yeah? Um, basically, it's a part of the building permit fee, um, that when folks, um, apply for a solar permit, um, that was. Again, we're one of the few towns that didn't have that and it's, um, again, just sort of fair for everybody when they have a building to, to have some type of fee structure, so. It is not astronomical, it's based on per megawatt, um, but again, this is our first reading of that. And, um, if there's no questions, we'll again schedule that for a second reading and a public hearing at our next meeting. And animal shelter rules and regulations update, I think we're gonna sort of table that to remove it to regulatory review, is that correct?
Yep.
Right. Alright. Uh, item nine is discussion items, uh. While we've got them right here, we'll take the request from RSU twenty-five Robotics, Robotics Club for funding, I, I saw some robotics stuff out there, so. Who's here for the robotics club? Come on, read it up, guys.
We're gonna just grab the robot real quick and bring it in here.
Does it shoot lasers?
It does not shoot lasers.
Alright. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
We're losing the, it's been a still span obviously.
Yep, we're losing it.
So, my name is Wen.
And I'm Harry.
Uh, you may know the two of us from our work on the waterfront this summer, but we're also members of the robotics team as well as we have a couple of people who are here. Um, a little history about the team, if you're, if you don't know much about it, we were founded in twenty seventeen, we only had twelve members when we first started. Uh, now we're going into our seventh season and we have twenty-six members of the team. And another seventeen members who participate through the high schools engineering classes, so. This program, uh, provides students in this community an opportunity to explore STEM, so that's science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. In a way that no other program in the area really can compete. Um, no classroom can provide what hands-on experience can, uh, so. You, you really will learn more through hands-on than any worksheet or any lecture you ever attend. Uh, personally, I've been able to explore the career that I've been looking into, which is mechanical engineering, I've actually been accepted to the University of Maine. And I learned about everything I know so far through robotics, and that's where my interest really started to develop, so. That's been something that's been able to help me through and show me what it's really like to do this kind of stuff hands-on and not just be told. Or just read it from a book or seen it on the internet is how it typically goes.
Yeah, and, uh, me as well, I've been a part of a robotics team for eight years now because we had a middle school and two, and. My brother was actually one of those original twelve members on the high school team and, uh. It has been like the biggest part of my life for those past four years in the high school and coming through has really shown me the career path I want and I've also been accepted to. Humane and, um, MMA, so. Um, this program, although we talk how wonderful it is, it is not very cheap. And, uh, this year you can see in your packets, our budget is sixty-one thousand, and so far we raised a total of forty thousand. Um, we ask that you guys consider an annual donation of five thousand dollars, uh, yearly for the next five years. And, uh, as you can see in that packet, we have a tiered system that outlines the sponsor benefits, um. Those include personalized thank you letter, uh, posts featured on our social media pages and also being on team shirts and a fit banner. The town seal will also go on our robot this next year and the town will be announced at all of our events. We go to two events, a district event and then a world competition. Um, if you'd like any clarification on the system, you can refer to that, uh, in your packets or you can ask us.
Um, if you guys were to consider sponsoring the team, the money would be used to bring more students to competitions. So, obviously, the more money we have, the more students we can give this opportunity to get hands-on experience. It's, it's really important that students get this real-world setting before they go off to decide their career. Um, some people I know I've spoken to ha- uh, had an interest in like computer science or engineering and they actually realized that they didn't like doing it through real-world experience and that they. Were able to change that before they started paying for college. Um, the reason that we have to ask, uh, businesses and tonight the town, uh, for sponsorship is although the school does pay for part of our, uh, funding. It's considered an extracurricular activity, so obviously classes have to take precedent, so there's not enough in the school's budget all the time to be able to send us to all the events. So, the more we can raise, the more events we can go to. And just because this, uh, isn't part of a class, just because it's an extracurricular activity doesn't mean that it fails to have a positive impact on students who are in the program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
How, how many of you go to each?
So, right now, I think we're equipped to bring eighteen students to the first, uh, three competitions and we're looking to be able to bring more. Um, the world competition that we're looking at going to if we qualify, uh, is a little bit less because we have to pay for flights, so typically. The older students get priority because the hope would be that we'd like to go every three years, so seniors, juniors, and. The seniors and juniors would get to go and then the freshmen and sophomores would get to go when they're juniors and seniors, that's typically how it works.
How many people on the team?
Uh, right now we have twenty-six who are, uh, participating after school and throughout the day during like study halls and another seventeen who help out during the engineering classes.
Okay.
And I just want to clarify that, that, the money we receive, we make sure to spend every year, it, we, we have a, a reserve as well, but. Any extra money we get immediately goes to bringing more students because we almost always have students that we could be bringing if we had more funding, so.
What are, what are the requirements for a student to get on the robotics team?
So, we don't cut or anything like a varsity team would, but we have a system where, um, you're prioritized to go to competitions more if you've put in more time. Or if you have a, an important role on the team, you'll be of a higher priority, so if a student comes in, you know, typically each of us will put in, the average is. Around a hundred hours over the course of a couple of months.
So, there are no, uh.
Nope.
Testing requirements?
No, there's no testing requirements, there's no financial requirements, you know, students, the only thing that students pay for is. Uh, each student is provided with a T-shirt with the team logo and our sponsors on the back and if students want more T-shirts, they pay for that, but that I'm pretty sure is the only part we pay for on the program.
So academically, it doesn't matter, if you want to join the team, you can join.
Uh, as long as. As long as your grades are high enough to stay off the school's grade check system, so if your grades are low, you can't participate in any activities.
I don't know what grade check system is.
So, at the school, if your grades, if you have a class that you're not passing, you can't participate. Every two weeks, they'll look at your grades, if you have a class you're not passing, they'll put you on the grade checks. So you have two weeks to fix it and if you don't fix it, you can't participate in any, uh, extracurricular activities until you've brought your grades back up to maximum.
Good, thank you.
Can you just describe that and what it does?
Yes. You guys?
So, last year, we had a game, they were oversized tennis balls, they were like ten inches square. Before, a couple of days ago, when our, this team started taking this apart because we're moving on, there used to be an intake that would come down and suck these balls up and hold them here. They were shooting into a basketball hoop that was eight feet off the ground. And then you could also climb like, um, monkey bars that go higher and higher up to six feet off the ground. But that's not on to you.
This one's our summer comp robot, so we have regular season events, which we're, right now we're in, but once that was season over during the summers, they have mini competitions that aren't really any value, they're just for fun. And so we built this in a matter of how many weeks? Three weeks of most of us, and that was right at the end of school, I was just coming anytime I can and we threw it together just because build a second robot, have fun, so.
You, you just didn't throw that together, trust me.
Yeah, damn it. So most of the time our, our, we would have a CAD team that would CAD it up and like we would spend hours of finding it, this we kind of didn't, so it is, it's a little wonky, but. The main goal, we got to test out a lot of things, uh, we wanted to test out because it's a good time to practice new ideas, new inventions. But our regular robot would have climbers and stuff on here, but this one's a lot smaller and lighter than our old robot is.
The main reason we actually built a second robot last year was this one has, uh, a type of drivetrain that can move kind of like your office chairs can. So while the top of the robot can stay in one spot, it can move in a full three sixty. So that was something we were testing and that was just an opportunity to do it in a low-pressure environment where you're not actually competing in the season.
And that, that, uh, ability to do that in the offseason means that this year we completely plan to use that style of drivetrain in our season, so.
So i- in your, in your budget stuff, I don't, I don't see anything in here for, other than just the additional robot parts, is that for new robots that you guys build or is that to maintain what you have?
So, most components on this robot can be reused, we take them apart every year, so with, it's built for the season and then we take it apart, so all the. The motors, the belts, a lot of that kind of stuff, all the electronics can be reused, the only thing we have to buy year to year typically is if we've broken any electronics, we have to buy them, sometimes we have to upgrade them. Uh, we upgraded a couple of things last year and then we have to buy all of the like aluminum and, uh, plexiglass that we have to use because that's, once it's been cut, it's cut to a specific size, so.
This may be a Sue question, where's the RSU with funding this?
The RSU funds are, uh, they provide, I think, twenty thousand dollars annually to the robotics team, um. It's an, it's considered an extracurricular activity, it receives a similar level of funding as some of the sports programs.
So.
Received.
It's a more, more expensive.
It, well, the competition for this is more expensive, um, they're not local, there's, you know, they're not, you're not going to mountain desert or.
Our closest competition is in New Hampshire and the farthest if we make it would be Worlds in Texas.
That leads to my question, gentlemen, that I know the answer to, but I want you to, to highlight your pro, the history of your program a little bit, can you talk about how you've done in those regional and world competitions?
So, in the first year, obviously, they made it to Worlds, uh, the second year they did as well, and then since then, we haven't been back. There was one year that they didn't meet the requirements, the next year after that was twenty twenty, so. We had COVID hit after our first competition, so we had gone to Massachusetts and competed once, uh, we were on pace to make it to Worlds, we had planned to, we had raised the funds too. But we were not able to because of COVID, um, the year after that, everything was done virtually, so you would record how your robot performed and it was judged that way. That leads us to last year where we qualified, but there was a, a timing issue where we weren't able to go to Worlds. But we placed second in New England and then second at all of our regional events, so. Typically, second sounds bad, but you think of it kind of like a, like a NASCAR race or something where it's not just two teams, it's a lot of other teams where. You know, we, we had events where there was forty, there was one event where there was eighty teams and we placed second.
So actually, the, the, you could build a case pretty easily that the, this is one of the more, from a competitive angle as well as other angles, this is one of the more successful teams.
Yep.
Or activities at Bucksport High School, couldn't you?
Uh, we had the number one shooter in New England last year for accuracy.
Yep.
How many other schools around here?
Uh, the closest locally is Brewer and then there's a couple, there's Bonnie Eagle, Bonnie Eagle, and then there's a couple of private schools that do it and a couple down in southern Maine.
And they go to the same competition?
They go to, most of the same competition too.
Do you guys beat them?
We have, yeah.
Alright. Said proudly.
Um, can I ask, before you started in the program, before you joined robotics, how much did you know about any of this?
None.
Nothing.
Nothing, yeah.
Um.
You speak very fluently, for someone who started a few years ago knowing nothing about the topic.
We have some really great mentors and coaches that, just the level of teaching expertise, I've learned everything, I, I could take this part and rebuild it for you. And I've learned it out of a matter of just a couple of years.
Any other questions? Nope.
Uh, I believe their funding schedule is that because their meets are, that they.
So.
At least their, their paraphernalia, the gear that they're having printed and all this kind of stuff, if you want your names on things, is the end of February that you've.
End of January.
End of January, that you have to have some sort of a commitment in order to.
Yep.
Um, to be able to do that.
Yeah, we have that.
So, our, the names of our sponsors get printed on the, the back of our shirts that we wear to our competitions and like we said, uh, that w- there's not as much of a time constraint on that, but one of the. Tiers of the system is you have your logo printed, uh, like printed in vinyl and cut and we have it on the robot. So, that would be in this case the town seal, so that would go somewhere on the robot.
Pleasure to counsel?
So this is for five thousand a year, five-year commitment?
It's what you guys are asking for, correct?
Yes, yep.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Good luck, guys.
You got it.
Thank you.
I was gonna ask, and I really didn't care.
Uh, so the discussion items are on the agenda, but we did have a couple of committee meetings, um, prior to our council, first was the, uh, infrastructure committee meeting, Mark?
Yep, we, uh, heard from a representative from Ampean Fuel Cell Technology, um, and she went into a lot of words about what she was looking to do, um, and. They may come forward with an application for Luke and we can figure it out from there. Uh, second item was the Bucksport Historical Society and we decided to push that conversation out to budget season.
Any questions?
Next was a regulatory review committee.
Yep, we had a discussion about the animal shelter policy and decided to move that into regulatory review as well as the fee schedule related to the, um, the shelter. And we did move forward the, uh, fee for the, um, so, uh, solar permitting. And lastly, we moved forward a proposal to change the zoning of map thirty-two lot one seventeen, one eighteen, one twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-six from village to downtown.
Questions? Uh, next is agenda items, the first is resolve twenty twenty-three thirty-seven to approve the SUI interest rate for twenty twenty-three. You know, senior packet, uh, is remaining at four percent, how would the council like to proceed?
Motion.
Second. Questions? All those in favor? Opposed? If she passes? There are asterisks, YZs, there are.
There are asterisks, okay, are we on the next thing now?
Yep.
Okay. Um, the next two agenda items are related to the same topic, which is, um. To either start or not start the process for considering the elimination of the public easement on a portion of the gully road. And the asterisk next to them were supposed to be where the dot is at the bottom where it says memo information from prior gully road discussion and while that, um. That information is only background information, if the council chooses to start this process, this is a new process and, and. That, that's a s- that process ended in November, this new process would start. After the council made a d- decision on whether or not to do that, but, um, there's a, an A or a B option, um. Depending on what, what the council wishes to do and I believe there are a number of people.
Sure.
Here, this is.
So first is resolve twenty twenty-three dash thirty-one A, uh, to start the process for the consideration of elimination. Of the public easement on the portion of the gully road, how would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion does not pass. Second is resolve. Twenty twenty-three thirty-one B to not restart the process for the consideration.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, do we need to even do this one?
We don't have to.
We don't have to do this, I'm correct, okay.
You should let people talk, but we will.
What's that?
See, you should let people say something, I think that's why the people here in channels wanted to say something.
Oh. I did, my mistake, um. We've taken a vote on it. I, I, I did, I did not even think to ask for public comment on that and I apologize.
Mr. Mayor, would you like a motion to.
Rescind the vote?
Yep, I'll rescind my motion to, uh, to start the process for consideration of elimination of the public easement on a portion of the gully road.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Thank you. I'm gonna start over again. Resolve twenty twenty-three thirty-one A to start the process for the consideration of elimination of the public easement on a portion of the gully road.
Motion approved. Second.
Anybody from the public like to have anything to say?
I would.
Kurt? Yep.
By now, everybody, I've introduced myself before, Kirk Matthew, I own some property in Bucksport and. Uh, I just wanted to say, in consideration of, of the board to vote, uh, in favor of this for, um, certain reasons, uh, the. There's been some concern about potentially some financial impact to the town, um. And that's, you know, certainly understandable and I can appreciate that, um. I wanted on public record that I voted or I offered a resolution to this prior to getting to this point. Um, and that resolution was to grant somebody access across my property to the gully road. It was a verbal offer. That would have eliminated all this process, we wouldn't even be having this discussion right now of, of possibly closing the road. Since then, uh, there's been childish behavior, needling, picking, stuff, so. So I am going to rescind that offer of the resolution. I think if we proceed to close a portion of it and the town votes to do that, I think there's little to no cost, um, to the town for doing that. Because of the fact that there's three property owners that are all in favor of closing that section of the road. So you should not get any pushback. There should not be any discussion about whether the road is, you know, ten feet off center of where it's supposed to be now. Uh, it wouldn't require any surveys that I'm aware of at the expense of potentially the town, which would be a concern of mine as well if I was you guys. So I, I think it would be up to a landowner or somebody that thinks they have a deeded access to bear that expense and not the town. So if you vote to keep it open, if you will, then I think the discrepancies of where the road is now, um, surveys, additional expenses, then becomes a potential town expense that I believe is unwarranted. So I would like you to consider that fact and, um, I, I will say since the road has been opened, uh, I've owned the, the property since twenty seventeen. And in that four years' time, up to twenty twenty-two October, I've had probably twelve, uh, instances where I've had people trespassing on my property or whatever. Since October of twenty twenty-two to December twenty-eight, twenty twenty-two, I've had a hundred and twenty-eight different instances where people have not necessarily trespassed because they're on the gully road, but have, have come in, that are invited by, with signs along the whole Jacob Buck Pond Road, advertising that the road is open. And I don't think that that's, I should bear the expense to fix the roads on my property for these people. So therefore, I would hope you guys would consider to vote in favor of trying to close a portion of that. And thank you for your time. Happy New Year.
Thank you.
We, uh, we have a packet that tells us to go to three oh two six in the twenty-three MRS. That's the state statutes. And if we just continue on to three oh two eight, you will see under definitions that it tells you that if anybody has access to their properties other than this portion that we want to close down, there is no need to notify them ahead of time that there's going to be any decision made about closing them down. It's very clearly written and all these rules changed, uh, in, uh, October of twenty twenty-one. And three, three oh two six says that, uh, there are certain procedures you have to go by, but it requires continued reading on through and on through all the way to thirty, three zero two eight. And under three subsection, three zero, zero two eight, it says that there's the definitions of who has to be notified and why. And people that have another access to their properties aren't required to be notified according to the statutes. So this was the issue that originally was going to send us into court. That court case has been dropped. It's, it's not in court. We're not on our way to court over this situation. And as far as the amount of money that's been spent, all this, it was a very miniscule amount of money that was, that was spent on that, getting that court case out of there, I guess, or whatever. That was, that was the only thing that money was spent on, other than the, uh, wages of the people here working in the office and, and, uh, so forth. And so it wasn't a, it hasn't been a big expense on the, on the shutting down of the gully road.
Anybody else? Would you have anybody on the podium, Senator?
No, I just sent a message that the podium mic is much better. Thank you for your attention to this.
Anything else? All right, have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion does not pass. Item eleven, resignations, appointments, assignments and elections. First is Jacob Grand, registrar of voters, appointment to twenty twenty-three. We gotta do a motion on this, correct? To accept him?
Yeah. Motion to accept.
Second.
Anything from the council? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, item twelve is approval of quit claims, discharges and deeds. First is heirs of Glendon Middlefield Junior, map zero twenty, lot zero zero seven, tax lien of six fifteen twenty twenty-one. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion. Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Next is heirs of Audrey Johnson and Frank A. Johnson, the third, PR, tax lien six twenty-two sixteen, six twenty-one seventeen, six twenty eighteen, six nineteen nineteen, six thirty twenty, six fifteen twenty-one. How would the council like to proceed? Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor? You guys in favor, are you?
Yeah.
Sorry. Yep, I'm sorry. Uh, next is Patricia L. Holmes, map forty-two, lot twenty-three, tax lien six fifteen twenty twenty-one. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved. Second.
Second.
All those in favor? Next is Ruth Bennett, map six, lot fifty-two, tax lien six fifteen twenty twenty-one. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Just one note, I, I only want to note that, um, Mr. Johnson, you'll notice Mr. Johnson paid up a good deal. Mr. Johnson was the one that you granted the opportunity to redeem his property for foreclosure, um, with a certain pay per month and he paid the whole thing off in December. So, um, it was a good process and, uh, I'm glad Mr. Johnson got to keep his property.
Uh, next is Town Managerate Court, Department Head Reports.
All right. I participated in a podcast with the ICMA International City Managers Association and their Voices in Local Government about Bucksport, along with Heart, the Heart and Soul Organization. It was a voice recorded program of about thirty minutes and will be available sometime in February. In addition, I have been asked to be a panelist on a recorded W E R U radio show about comprehensive planning. It is being on, recorded on January sixteenth and then there was a live event on the same topic on February eleventh at the Moore Center in Ellsworth at noon that I have been invited to be a panelist on. Bucksport is seen as a good example of many things and I am always flattered to be invited to participate in events to tell the Bucksport story. I was honored last night to attend and speak at the annual public safety meeting with all police, fire, EMS dispatch and animal control employees. This is the first time in three years that it has been possible to hold an entire group meeting due to the impact of COVID. It was a great event with length of service awards, discussions of the work over the past several years and pizza. Team Bucksport Public Safety Division is a pretty amazing group of people dedicated to helping the residents of Bucksport. A reminder that Monday is Martin Luther King Junior Day and the town office and the transfer station will be closed. The town office will reopen on Tuesday, January seventeenth at seven thirty AM and the transfer station will reopen at nine AM on Thursday, September nineteenth. According to the company we purchased the senior center bus from, it should be here by the end of January. I am excited to add this to the center for its programs, its trips and the pickups for meals. We should also be receiving the public works truck that we ordered nearly a year ago within the next month and a half. Anyone that says supply chain distribution is over is not. It isn't. Um, ordinance language related to private holiday expressions at the holiday season will be on the regulatory review agenda at the meeting on January twenty-sixth. And I want to take a moment to thank Brandon Eldon, who served as an intern to Community and Economic Development Director Rich Rotella for this past semester. Brandon is a senior in RSU twenty-five. He did an excellent job and the project he worked on with and for Rich and had the opportunity to see local government from the inside. He attended meetings, did research toward town sites, designed the T-shirt for the parade, parade of lights and became a real part of Team Bucksport. Had the opportunity to have lunch with the governor when she was in town and met many of our local business owners and heard their needs and concerns. We wish Brandon well as he pursues his academic career at Thomas College in Business Administration. I know that he has a very bright future ahead of him. As an update to the landfill proposal, the town has received some of the information requested from the DEP in regard to the environmental status of the AIM landfill and as a result of that, has requested more. The AG's office has still not responded to the legal questions that I submitted. I have met, talked with a number of people who have concerns over the proposal and ensured that, and assured them that the town is doing due diligence on this idea as it does any proposal that comes to the town. The initial verbal presentation contained on the surface, things that could have been beneficial to the town, such as stabilized location for our own C and D, tipping fees and a regional solution for a number of other communities as well. However, as we do with all proposals, once identified, we do due diligence to see exactly what we would be buying. And so far, the condition of the landfill and the rules under which C and D landfills can operate pose concerns. Answers to the legal questions will provide more data for the town in determining how best to handle the results of the information that we are receiving.
Thank you. Uh, next item is public hearings and we don't have any, but we've got a couple. We got set, Jake, right for the next meeting?
That's item sixteen, seventeen.
Right, we don't have any public hearings right now. Again, I'm trying to figure this all out again, sorry. Ah, itaramba. Um, next is discussion of items not on the agenda for the council or the public. Anybody in the public have anything to, that's not on the agenda? Anybody on the council? Oh, gone.
Good evening. This landfill idea, this trash dump idea that's come before us and, and it, and it's, uh, you folks have a process that you're going through. You're asking the attorney general for some information, you're asking the state for some information. Um, and, uh, that kind of stuff. The citizenry, all, the citi- the citizens of the town also have a process. They have a serious concern. If I can read the tea leaves correctly, and I think I do, town doesn't want this. This has serious, serious implications. This is a, this is, this deals with the heart and soul of this town. We don't need to become the trash dump for the state of Maine. Landfills have problems, they all do. They're all in court. They all have serious, serious measures of pollution, groundwater, groundwater issues, there are up there now. The latest reports from DEP should be eye opening. We don't need any more meetings. We don't need opinions outside. We don't need the state to tell us what to do. What we need to do is work together, face the issues that are there at the landfill now. We don't need to reopen it. We don't need the money. We don't want it. This is a bad idea. This is one of the worst ideas I've seen in a while. I honestly think that, uh, we need to say no to this and we need to do it now. The longer this goes, the longer you start playing games with bureaucracies, the state level, et cetera. This may fit the state needs. What are they going to do with this stuff? There are ways to do this. We can force the state to take another look at how they do business. The last thing they supposed to, supposed to do is do landfill stuff. Well then, let's do it that way. There's other technologies that can be, that can be forced to work. There's other things going on, it's not our issue. We start opening that dump and we're going to have more problems than we have now. We've got groundwater issues, we've got untreated leachate pouring out of there right now. I went up and had a nice day with myself up there Monday. It's a roar coming out of that leachate pond untreated. It's not covered, part of it's not covered. AIM says, well, we'll cover it. The first initial response was, we'll, we'll cover it when the town of Bucksport takes ownership. They assumed that. In part, it's pretty arrogant. I think we as, as, as citizens, I think, I, I think the, the, the serious, serious, serious opposition to this. I don't know where you guys are, I hope you'd listen to the citizens. Cause I have. I'm opposed to it, I have a bias, I, I'm, but I've done my homework on this. And so has a lot of people. I ask you to say no to this thing and I ask you to say no to it fast before it becomes a real issue and becomes, the state gets involved in all kinds of stuff. We need to move on, we need to work as a community together. We need to remediate, ask DEP's help, ask AIM's help for taking care of some of the serious issues that are already there. There are serious issues, if you've seen the preliminary reports from DEP, they didn't, they weren't even in compliance up there. They didn't follow their permit, the last one they had. They were permitted, I think for fourteen million or something yards or whatever it was. They put nineteen in and said, oh. So I don't know if, what kind of credibility is, I mean, people say a lot of things, but some people suffer too. People get sick. People get sick from landfills. Ground, the groundwater already is showing arsenic issues. I've got arsenic filters on my well. Other people do too and other people are noticing rising. I don't, I'm not saying it's coming from there. Maine has arsenic issues in certain spots. They bought out people that were there when that mill, when the mill was operating and throwing everything in there. Who knows what's in there now? God does. I don't. I can only assume. So I ask the council to be quick, strong and move on this now. We don't need more stuff. We need to get over with and we need to get on with doing town business, helping out and fixing up that, 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 that mess that's up there now. We don't need to make a bigger mess.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you, I'm Nancy Minnet. Um, I concur with what Dawn's sharing, but I have a different topic, but I don't mean to make light of what he's just spoken of because this is a little bit lighter. I, I want to say thank you to whoever, whether it was the counselors, I'm not sure what the protocol was at the time, that voted to, um, keep the bathroom open during the winter on the waterfront. I met a, a new couple to town, uh, maybe a couple of months ago at the trumpet, on a, uh, the trumpet, at the crumpet, for one of the evenings, Wednesday evenings when they have music. A delightful couple that have moved up from Virginia. Monday, Monday, I think, I had an opportunity to walk the waterfront. And I was telling her that during the Heart and Soul Project, the waterfront was considered by many folks in town as the jewel. You know, a jewel of the waterfront, it was just a really outstanding asset that Bucksport has. And she said, they are loving the waterfront, that in their town, in Virginia where they lived, it was rural. And so to have this at their, they just live off of Main Street. So, and it, we, we just were chatting and getting to know each other. I'm thrilled to have. So, and it, we, we just were chatting and getting to know each other. I'm thrilled to have, um, new people moving into town. And we must have walked for four and a half miles. We just kept going back and forth, and I, at one point said, uh, there's a bathroom open here. So, so anyways, I wanna thank, however that process came, I think it's a great asset to our jewel of a waterfront.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody on the council? All right. Um, upcoming public hearings, committee assignments, so we do have two public hearings next meeting? Correct. We'll have a second reading and then a public hearing on those things there. Uh, we have listed here goals and objectives, meeting date, and services committee meeting date, and I thought you said that we'll need a regulatory review also.
We need regulatory review as well. Um, we sometimes take the, uh, the off week on a Thursday to do goals and objectives, rather than try and do it on the same night as a council meeting, particularly if we have other committee meetings that we generally have on that. We are now in the middle of budget development yet again. You won't see it till, um, beginning of April, but the rest of us are wallowing around in it.
How are folks looking for February second?
For goals and objectives.
Yep. We'll go at six o'clock if it works for everybody. That works?
Yep, that's fine.
That's good. We hear everybody good?
I'm double checking, but I believe so. I just, sometimes I tend.
Yeah, fine.
Yep.
All right, February second, six o'clock.
And so services and regulatory review will be prior to, we have, um, candidates to replace our resigned planning board member, who's now sitting here as a council member, but, um, so that's what we need services for, is for review of, we have two applications for planning board member for Steve's seat. And then regulatory review, we have the holiday, um, private expressions that we said we were gonna do like in last year, and we have, um, the animal shelter, um, fees or policies or whatever it is that we were going to take a look at that again under a different, not just under police as a policy, rather than, put it in the town code as a regulation.
Aren't we gonna look at animal shelter location and building as well?
That's not regulatory review. That's infrastructure. Um, services will take probably twelve minutes, so if you are good at starting at five thirty, I think the animal shelter location one could take a bit longer. So if you wanna do infrastructure from five thirty to six thirty, regulatory review, six thirty to six forty-five, and services, six forty-five to seven, that would be, those other two are very short.
That would be on the twenty-sixth?
The twenty-sixth.
Five thirty, infrastructure, six thirty, regulatory, six forty-five, services.
Yes.
Can, can, can we move, can we go, and I'm just thinking of time, fifteen minute, how about five thirty to six fifteen?
Okay.
And then six fifteen to six forty-five to give a half an hour for regulatory, just make sure.
More questions?
Yeah, just make sure we cover if we're, if we're changing ordinances or, or thinking about doing that to, to move it.
Okay, five thirty to six fifteen, infrastructure, six fifteen to six forty-five, regulatory review?
Yep.
And services, six forty-five to seven?
Sure.
All right.
And like I say, if, um, if, if folks can get me their, their, their desires for committees, um, I think everybody's noticed that for the most part, the whole council is usually here for all the committees, but if you can't make it, um, or if there's something that, uh, that you wanna serve on the committee for, um, just another place to have a good discussion outside of the regular council, we can take more time to look at, to look at some issues, so.
And can you let me know the outcome of that so that I can post those agendas for the appropriate members?
Yep. All right. Welcome, Steve.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Put your, put your seatbelt on.
It's been on.
All right. Adfirmment.
Motion to adjourn.
Take it. All those in favor? Thank you.